I'll take no further. I call this meeting to order. This is Board of Selectmen work session for Thursday, January 16th. And I would like to first begin with announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for record keeping. Is there anyone else present who wishes to record the meeting?
Mr. Chairman.
So Mr. DeGant will be recording as well. Attendance sheet, those of you who are here kind enough to sign in on the assignment sheet, which is someone's back there so that we can indicate to your attendance at today's meeting. And I would like to turn it over now to Kevin Arjuni and our town administrator to discuss the FY 21 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So today we have on the docket a number of different department budgets we'll talk about. Treasurer, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Inspectorial Services, Library. We'll cover debt service in a classified. We also have at 3:30 a joint meeting with the Planning Board. And so as we go through this, any of these items that we need to push if necessary, we certainly cancel the following work session next week. But we'll try to do the best we can to get through as much as we can. So without any further comment, just general housekeeping. The first item we have is the Treasurer's Office, which if you turn to page three of your hard copy of the budget, it's on the second half of that budget. We had a retirement that took place. And we have a new town treasurer and collector, Jackie Como, who has done fantastic work since she's begun. And so you'll notice the salary is reflective of that change. You'll also notice the reduction longevity as well as a result of the former treasurer collector and her long term as such for the town. And this is in line with what we've spoken about the last meeting with a step increase associated with that position. In addition to that, in the same token of wages and personnel, we have two members of our team in that office who also an increase is reflected here of the same step increase as well. And then beyond that, in the other category, there is a publication that GASB 45 publication comes out every two years. And this is a year where it will not be necessary to purchase it. But we've marked it with a note so that next year it will be reflected.
I'm not sure if I follow that. What did we do in the past on that one?
With the publication.
Yeah, on the GASB.
It's GASB 45. It's when the actuary comes in and he does an actuarial review and it's every two years. He has us on kind of a different cycle right now that we're going to try that where we receive the funds in FY 2000, so we don't leave them in FY 2001. But the actuary isn't actually going to happen to 2001. So we end up encumbering it and spending it that way. But so we're going to switch the cycle next year. But it's every two years.
Kevin?
Yes?
Another question going back on the Treasurer Collector Department. Treasurer additional vacation accrual pay. Is that just, that is something that we're not logging or is there nothing this year?
Those line items aren't being used anymore because we created several years ago the compensated absences fund. I just can't delete it from here because the spreadsheet actually goes over to 2013.
I thought that might be the case, but I just wanted clarification on that thing that was looking at it.
Yeah.
No other questions? We can move on to the Planning Board budget, which is on page six. Notice that that is a level funded budget.
Which department?
Planning Board, page six. And then below that is the zoning board, which is also level funded. Considering the meeting shortly, thought it was relevant to have this year just in case there were any questions. Some of the relevant people will be joining shortly.
So just on the Planning Board, because I know we've had some issues every time. It talks about advertising. And we had an expenses of last year of 2,200 whatever. And what we're budgeting is 1,000. It's obviously driven by activity. Why do we think we're going to be okay with only the thousand? I like it as level funded, but if we have experience. I guess you might say because there's nothing to date. Well, 12/31/19 really means I learned four months, right? Okay. No comment.
Is there reason FY 19 was so high?
Yeah, it looks to me like that may have been an anomaly because the year before it was a thousand bucks.
It's project based.
Yeah.
So it's based, if I might address the board. It's because of the legal notices for the warrant. And we had at the EHDs or the marijuana, which was very long and it was very costly.
Ah, ah, okay.
So that's why it goes up and down. Events.
Thank you.
All right, so if you want to turn to page nine, Inspectorial Services. So this one, as you're aware, there's some changes operationally from personnel standpoint. A few months ago, there was an approval to transition a little bit with hours. Glenn, our long-term Inspectorial Services Director, formerly retired, however, has, will be staying on in a part-time capacity. And at the same time, our administrative assistant in the office is going to be adding hours so there's more coverage of the window. So with that, what you'll see in the budget here is a conservative approach to look at that. The conversation has been that at six months, there'll be a reassessment or a look to see if we want to continue to operate in that capacity. Our Inspectorial Services Director and I have been communicating regularly about how things are going around that. We continue to monitor and see how that process is playing out. But without having true definition behind it, in the event that it doesn't work in six months, at the time when the budget would start, because we're looking at six months starting January 1st to the end of June, July 1st, when the budget goes into place, and if we had to hire somebody in full-time capacity or different hours than what's associated. Because that's really the crux of it, is looking at the number of hours. And if we can manage all the projects and the work that's necessary, there might be a need to ramp up that. In that, in which case, we want to make sure we identify enough funds to be able to put the position out and find someone who's qualified to fill that position. So there's a lot of unknowns in that element of it. What would happen with the Inspectorial Services at the window with the hours there? We're also monitoring that and tracking how that's working in regards to how often the contractors come through or others come through for permits and customer service. We're also looking at doing some additional, we have the online permitting system, but we're looking to ramp that up a little bit more with online payments, which might be, might create a little more efficiency in the office long-term, but upfront it might be a little bit more work if they need to set that up. So there's some, so there's a few unknowns within that process. And so that's reflective in this budget, but on a conservative side, allowing us the flexibility if things do change from the current setup.
If we do decide that we need it full-time and the 18 hours is not working, are the assistants' hours adjusted accordingly? Is she aware that that is also being reviewed then in six months? Because we've increased them at this point.
I'm not sure. I'll let Glenn answer that probably more directly. From my seat right now, I'm not aware if there was a clear indication, because I have prior to me if that, if they're tied together. I'm not sure. I'm looking at it a little bit sort of independently to see how it works at the window. I'm not looking to ramp up that budget, the hours collectively for the two people. But from an operations standpoint, seeing what the value is of having that. And if it makes sense to adjust it back and ramp that up, it was sort of a trial period.
It was definitely presented as a culmination. One was going down, therefore money was freed up to move forward.
I did have that conversation with Diane and she knows that that's a possibility if this doesn't work, that the hours, that her hours may be reduced again. However, by fully funding the budget, which is what's presented, if it didn't work and you wanted to go back up to the position of 30 hours a week, I'm assuming that after my being here for 22 years, that the new person coming in wouldn't be making the same rate that I am that is reflected in this, in the proposed budget. So, you know, there would be money in there to maybe not have to completely reduce her hours back to the, to the 24. I mean, she had an increase of eight hours. So there would be some, there should be some additional money in this budget to keep Diane at more hours than the 24 in the event that this whole thing doesn't work. To the board's satisfaction or to mine? Was that clear to everybody?
No, it was clear, yes. It permanently puts it on a level to be increased hours going forward if we do go back to the 30 hours. So even though for the first, for that year would be covered, it has increased hours overall in that department if we go back, if we keep the assistant.
Yeah, it absolutely would be an increase in the hours, but that's been warranted for years.
We'll see.
Next, there's an increase of $221 on the alternate inspection line. Which Glenn, I don't know, can you speak to that one?
Which line, which line?
That's the, oh, I'm sorry. It's the $1,779 line item, wage, alt inspection. And the actuals have come in, 5140.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, sorry.
51140, that's very helpful to do with that line.
It's $221 increase on that.
On the one that I'm looking at, that's showing level funded on mine, 1779.
Yeah, it looks like we did the increase to 220, whatever it is, $257. That happens with the appropriation in FY 20. And this looks like the proposed budget for FY 21 is the same as last year. Is that accurate?
But there's a request after the signing, right? An additional 221?
So right, so this is above and beyond an additional plus for additional coverage. So when inspector's out, we have the funds available.
Well, yeah, the 221 is not reflected on this.
Right, it's disrupted sides. I think Kevin was asking.
Right, that would increase it to $2,000 instead of the 1779. That's always, that's, you know, you give your best guess at who's going to be sick, who's going to be, who's going to be on vacation, who's going to be filling in, how many times we're going to need an alternate inspector and that type of thing. So that's a.
Shot in the dark.
It's a shot in the dark, it absolutely is.
Glenn, if we got busy for a period of time as well, people are, it's not necessarily vacation time to take your sick time. We could tap into that line item to bring additional support in. So do projects simultaneously.
Right, absolutely. And the other thing that, the other thing that comes out of that, not that, actually it's a separate line item, so never mind that. Yeah, we absolutely could. I mean, that's in the, that's in the salaries and what, in the wages and wages. So if it was needed somewhere else within that, we could do that. But like John Thompson's been out for over a month. He's gone to Portugal, he gets back next month, next week. So, you know, so we have to, you know, fill in with that. You know, and anything comes out of that or what we've been doing with that is actually, because John isn't being paid while he's out, the alternate inspector's coming in and covering his hours and approving permits and, you know, talking to the public and that type of thing versus just strictly doing inspections. So he's just been getting John's salary. That doesn't always work that way if it's a long-term thing. If somebody's gone for weeks, then we do it that way. But if they're only gone for a week or a week and a half and somebody needs to cover for inspections, then, you know, then it comes out of the alternate inspector's, the alternate inspector's pay. And it's a crapshoot because sometimes, you know, some days there's no inspections and other days there's 10 or 11 inspections. So it's just, it's the best guess on history, so.
I have a question, looking at this is line 51140 again. It's kind of interesting. It kind of bounces around. In FY 18, it was $2,050. And the year after it dropped down to $1,525. Then it went up last year, actually this year, to 1779. But we're supposed to keep it the same. What drives the estimate? How do you decide what you're going to do? It seems that danced around. That was a change of a third that happened there. And I, obviously the history's not included directly in this. But how is an estimate made on how much it's going to be? Is it always sort of historical, look back at the previous year or?
Yeah, you kind of can't do that because what we did last year isn't necessarily what we're going to do this year.
That's why I'm saying how you decide.
You know, I, you know, at one point when I came up with that, I've always tried to fund this at $2,000, but then they always cut it back to, you know, for budget purposes, cut it back to around $1,500. So, you know, but I've tried to get it to 2,000 because it, it's the best guess. You know, it's the best guess and it's better to be funded. It's better to be funded and given, given back to the time than it is to have to come and say, you know, well, we're $500 or $600 short in that. It is interesting that it's almost exactly the average of 2018 and 2019. Took those two numbers and took the average, it comes out at 1,800 bucks.
The challenge on this is that sort of from a way we think and a policy point of view, what you say makes great sense. If we do that everywhere, the risk is that we would maybe end up with up to $100,000 that's sort of, you know, it's good that we budgeted, we had it, now we don't need it. And that is not raising taxes and having that extra that flows back into free cash.
Well, we're talking about a few hundred dollars here.
No, no, I understand.
I'm not sure how you would ever get to $100,000 on.
No, 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 I'm not talking about.
If every department did it, Trump.
No, I'm just saying it, it's interesting that this is an illustration of the challenge and how we define our philosophy and how to go about this. I'm not taking a position on whether this is right or wrong at all. It's just that knowing how the town likes to cut it as close to the skin as possible. This is one of those cases where I don't have a problem with staying in this way, but it's interesting how over. Some places always over budget so they're sure they have enough. Some places would rather go back and ask for more. We seem to try and find that line in the middle of which, yes, this goes over. It's tough to know, which is why I was wondering what the process is.
I mean, that's kind of why, you know, I mean, you try to do what's fair, excuse me, to the department and to the, you know, to the people too. So, you know, they have to have their inspections, so we have to be able to pay for them. We have to be able to pay the inspectors.
I have no criticism of it. It's clarification and I have to provide a slightly better picture now. So, thank you.
So then we talked about Diane, obviously there's a step increase there and the hour adjustment to go into the next line. Going down to the other category, the change you see there is on the telecommunications line item, there's requests so that the Inspectorial Services in the field have better data access on their iPads. Right now, as I understand it, there's some connectivity issues currently and this will be an upgrade on that so that they can be more efficient in delivering. So rather than having, if they have communication issues in the field, make notes, they come back to the office and they're putting it, they'll be able to make it in real time when they're in the field, as I understand it.
100%.
So this is like to Verizon or a company or something like that?
Right, that's a data plan for the iPads.
So there's two things there. One is that it went up 200. The request is up to 200 this year and still keeping everything at zero. But there's an additional request for, an additional 400. And so we need the 400 to do what you want to do or?
Yes, the thing is, is the town of Topsfield used to pay, excuse me, a portion of the cellphone bill that I had when I was, that was paid for by West Newbury and under West Newbury under that town. And Topsfield paid a portion of that. I always submitted a bill to at the, at the end of the fiscal year. And we're not doing that anymore. And the, the two, we'd need two data plans for iPads. The third inspector, the plumbing inspector is, he's also the plumbing inspector in West Newbury and he's on their data plan. So we wouldn't necessarily need one for him.
So who are these for, who are the plans for?
For myself and for the electrical inspector. And I believe they're $39.99 a month or $40 a month.
Does that end up saving you time?
It does, and it makes it more efficient. What happens now is the inspector will go out and do the inspections and he'll do them when he's, when he's leaving for the day. So, and then like he would come back, the electrical inspector was in on Tuesday and Thursday. He'll leave on Tuesday, go do his inspections. The results of the inspections doesn't get entered into the computer until he's back in on Thursday morning. If with the, with the iPad, the data plan, he could enter them in on-site when he was doing the inspection or when he got home, he could enter them in and then Diane would have them immediately. We have the ability to, through the iPad and through the permit link program to, if the inspection passes, you can just, you can click two buttons and it sends an email to the, to the contractor that says that it passed or it failed and why it failed.
Really important part of sort of the, we talked about downtime utilization. Big component of trying to see the investment, people investing in private property will be creating efficiencies within how we operate. And a huge component of that will be process where we can use the online permitting the way it's meant to in real time so that we can approve a permit rather than have the weekend within a matter of minutes after the inspection takes place. So, and I've seen in my prior experiences, working very well. And I think it's, it's a critical component for people who want to invest in it or make investments to be growth in construction. The last item on here with an increase on this budget is for the 10th edition state building code. So there's a new addition that's coming out or just came out?
It's coming out, it'll be coming out within the next fiscal year.
Okay. And so this will cover the purchase of that standard operating procedures for buildings, but departments have that paperwork.
Which line item is that?
That is line.
55800.
Yes.
55800, okay, I see.
And the 200 drop in insurance forms, is that a savings that we get by doing the online permitting? What is that? Which is a positive?
The forms, yeah, we haven't, we haven't used that. We do, everything we do now is, is through the computer and we print it ourselves. You know what I mean? So we will create our own forms if we need anything. That was back, that was, been carried over for years back. We used to order forms from the printer, which we don't have to do anymore. I eliminated it.
And one thing worth noting while we're on that budget is Glenn and I are going to have a conversation the next handful of days around the permitting fees as well. And taking the, currently the payment component using the online permit, you cannot make, you can go through the process, apply for the permit, but you can't make payment online. So we're going to talk about taking the next step, so allowing people that efficiency of being able to pay when they go in to get that permit and keep that process moving forward. So there's a couple of additional things, not necessarily reflective in the budget operationally that are happening that'll have a positive impact.
So we're kind of clicking for budgets here, which is good. But I wonder, this is all predicated on an increase in the grid of a 2%. And there was a discussion at the FinCom. I happened to be at the FinCom, you were there.
Yes.
We're kind of ignoring it if we don't talk about it, at least. The FinCom, my characterization of it, which you can correct, was that they said, are you, are you going to do anything this year? We're interested in where you are this year. And so there was not a whole lot of response on that except that they kind of expect us to at least come back to them, I think, in the near term to say, we're doing something or we're not doing something this year.
So it was posed very directly, what are you going to do, yes or no?
Or something in between, right?
Kevin, better said than done. You want to say what you said.
And there was some conversation out there, it was posed before I spoke about just that, you know, the conversation that the chair, John Guido and I have had conversations around this. I know we've had conversations around this. From a timing standpoint, the, I had explained to him that the guidelines included this as part of the guidelines for the departments. And not yet having the experience of understanding the history behind why it is the way it is, but now since I submitted this three weeks ago, learning a lot more in that process. And but also recognizing that the increases do seem, they are healthy increases here this year and the history behind that, for a number of years prior, it's been that very well. So the promise I made is we're taking a hard look at it, but I couldn't make further commitment beyond that because really we haven't had a chance to really vet that and see if there's a specific direction we want to go on that. And if it's this year or if it's something that we make some sort of plan for the future. I did tell him as well, and this is my, where I've kind of landed on it is, if we're going to make a change of something that's historically been a certain way, I feel strongly we need to have some data behind it and some facts to back it up. And so one thing that would certainly make sense is to do some market surveys, understanding, you know, since these types of increases have taken place, where do we fall? Are we still behind? Are we at market or are we above market? That'll help inform, you know, how we're doing. Because my understanding, again, before my time, is that the system was set up to accelerate in some degree salaries as it was identified at a certain time that Topsfield was behind and we weren't competitive. And it was, the most important thing we can have in the organization is talent for people and retain those talented people. And so, however, we end up going through this process and I'll certainly, you know, take guidance from the board. Want to make sure it's thoughtful and there's, there's facts and data that we can support in any type of change that we make. But on its surface, there certainly needs to be a conversation about it. And I think FinCom's certainly going to tackle it and discuss it further. And we can, we've got some data we're pulling. It was requested at our first meeting by Vice Chair, for me to just to pull some of it, where our salaries are currently. And which is a document that we've been working on. It's this close to happening for you today. But it's something where by next Thursday, you should have, we'll have a copy to present to you that we can go through as well. And that'll give you a sense of where we are. There have been some salary surveys. Some of my colleagues in other communities have been requesting some information on some of the specific departments and salaries. And so we, I'm getting some feel for what the workplaces look like. But we can take a much deeper dive on that through this process as well.
Thank you, Kevin, thank you. The fact that we're not just waiting for something. The fact that you're doing something within the next week, so to speak, getting data and you have a consistent asset next week, I think that's very helpful.
I think we, helpful too, to have information relative to contracts, the union contracts and what those numbers are like as far as increases. I don't know historically whether it was the steps, you know, the grid, the steps in rage that were bringing people to what we felt was a comparable level to other towns or the COLA component. or the COLA component, or whether it was the combination, because the COLA, my understanding would be that businesses are making that decision based upon the environment as well, what the market is. And so, I don't know, do you remember if it was the combination of the two that was getting mounted to that median?
There was a grid established, there was a grid established, and the grid had dollars in it with each of the positions.
Right, the steps in grade.
And then, using that grid, which included these components of grade and step, the grade especially was the first thing, what grade do you win? And then somebody in that grade, how did they compare to others, and based on where they compared to others, they were placed in a particular step that made it so that they were on board with what was going on in the industry.
Right, but was the COLA part of getting people up to that median level?
So the COLA didn't exist in a sense, it was what the grid said, so there, there was no, it was what the grid said.
Which is what I thought, that the COLA is more markets.
The following year, the grid did not stay the same, it increased by 2%. And the following year, the grid increased by 2%. So, the grid has effectively increased by 2% each of those years.
And what has gone into the discussion of whether it should be 2% for COLA or 1%?
There has been no discussion of that typically.
Over the years?
Kelly did not want to talk about that.
Almost nothing.
All right, so do we have other towns to go by as far as what the COLA increase is looking for?
Well, I think, it's not necessarily COLA increase, it's a...
It's not, but we've been calling it COLA.
It's a salary increase, it's quite a deal.
Outside of the steps in grades.
We don't relate it to the COLA.
Right.
So typically, and correct if I'm wrong, Catherine, but it's about 2.65%, one step to the next, without any additional increase to what those numbers look like year over year.
Right.
So then if you add on a 2% increase to what that step is, that's where you're seeing an exponential number of the 4.6 or whatever it might be.
Right, so other towns overall, their increases, are they looking, bucking up to 5% like ours are? Do we have those numbers for comparative?
I don't have those numbers yet, but I have had some preliminary conversations with some of my colleagues on, you know, how do you focus, every community is a little bit different. We didn't have, like Beverly grades and steps did not exist for non-union employees, it was a different sort of model, although they did it. You know, Marble's different, Hamilton Wyndham probably have nuances as well, but that's part of the research we do diligence in this place, and it needs to be comprehensive, you know, there's been sort of a precedent set for some time, and to make that change, I think, like I said, if we can stand behind it based on market conditions, based on data, that's, I think, will be really important.
Because last year, we put forward about doing a survey just of this nature.
Okay.
To get a sense, and the FinCom said no. All it wanted was the information on where our people were now at this point in time, and projected out, when would they actually get past the 4.75% increases, and kind of level off to the COLA or salary increase, et cetera. That was all they asked for.
Okay.
But I don't think just that piece alone is enough for us to make a decision about whether or not we adjust that. But that was all in for a full market survey, those other components that you said you were looking into, which would be really helpful.
Yeah.
More than just where our people are right now individually as a snapshot.
I'll pull as much information as quick as I can, and charities, but, you know, I think it's the right conversation to be having. I mean, it's, like I said, I said earlier, it's retaining talent for people is really important, we've got a great team here, but, you know, at a certain point, there's sort of that sustainability component of a model, and how sustainable can it be, so.
I think, I think we, or the selectmen over the past 10 or 15 years, agrees with your philosophy about the fact that we want to keep our people, letting people get out of here is expensive, and so we've got to make sure we fix that, and I believe we did that when the steps and levels chart was developed, but the fact of the matter is, that may have outlived its useful life at this point in time, and we need to reevaluate. And to clarify a point for you, when we did the steps and levels grid, we didn't talk about COLA. That was, that was a fixed moment in time to get people at the level that they ought to be paid.
Right.
And we didn't go any further, but the following year, we added 2%, okay? And that was probably a feeble-minded attempt to address the COLA issue, okay? And we do it 2% every year now, and so, we need to devote the time to talk about this particular subject specifically.
And then, that was my point, that they are separable.
Yes, they are.
They are not intertwined and kind of set in stone.
The grid stays the same, representing the historical picture, and then how much you lift the whole grid is the question. It's 3:30, I'd just like to point out that this is a great conversation, we do the best we can. I've been talking with Kevin, one of the things I have suggested is, we're going to try to do the best we can and the time we have with this, and get started on this conversation, but I think this is an important conversation about what is the sustainability of our current paper and structure, that we will continue past this budget season to take hard looks at where we're going to go, where we want to go, and how we might get there. So, we will have many conversations beyond just for this budget. Kevin, we had a point, we can pause because we have a bunch of folks outside for the meeting.
Sure, I do want to, Ms. Laura's here from the library as well, we should do that, I think.
Don, we just let her know we're going to bring in in a couple minutes, so they can come in now.
That's page 17, we'll postpone the debt and unclassified.
Page 17.
So, one of the first people I met was when I was doing my pre-start date conversations with departments, was Laura. She shared some incredible information about how active Topsfield Public Library is. Participation is amazing, the programs are fantastic as well. And so, we've shared some time together before I started, and then we've had a discussion as well. Just within the budget specifics, we look at the salaries and wages, same conversation, the step increases across the board there.
Kevin, could I say one thing about wages and salaries? So, every, there were 11 of us at the library, and we're all still on steps. Two people at the library, one person has been working there since 1982, and another person since 1997, they're still on steps. So, it just kind of illustrates a point about what the library looked like in terms of compensation from other libraries, that's just not normal. You know, to be there so long and still be on a step.
You mean on a single step?
Well, I mean, they're still in, on a step, they're not at the top of the grade yet.
Okay, okay.
And they've been there for over 20 years and over 30, so, I think that kind of looks at, looks at what the compensation was for the library before the 2013 study.
Just to clarify that, then, every year, the dollar amount of the step does go up, though. So if someone's climbing to get up, and the step keeps climbing, they're going to keep climbing. It's not like the step stops, and they've been climbing, and they're so far apart. It's a moving number, it keeps going up every year, so they keep climbing towards it.
Right, and now there are 11 steps to a grade, before, I think there were eight. But they're still, the point is that they're still on steps, you know, they should be, with that time, with that amount of service, they should be at the top of the grade.
That's my question, and they're not?
And they're not.
Okay. That is one of those structural things that we will want to take a look at, because it's a challenge to set it up so it is fair, comparable, and appropriate for across the town and someone. You've identified a very difficult situation, and having had a lot of experience with teacher negotiations, I know that, you know, where you are in the steps, and so, what happens when you reach the top, big issues.
And it could be the library's turning very, very low compared to other departments as well, so it's taking them on.
Absolutely right.
In a sense, for the record, it would appear, though, that the majority of the library's staff is at step eight, coincidentally, they're all pretty much latched together.
I can look at that right now and see it's a type 0, and it's a copy paste. Yeah, they all say grade nine, step eight, I'll make a correction on that.
Okay. Okay, so this is a correction to the outnumbered budget.
The budget number is correct, the salary is correct, however, the note on the side says nine.
The note on the side is wrong. Okay, so not eight, but nine?
No, it says...
So which step are they on?
I would have to get that information.
It varies a lot?
It's going to be varied.
Yeah, they are varied, you can see that by the different salaries.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to clarify one thing before we move on, and let Laura finish here, so she can get out of here. As I've said before, I think this, the problem that we're talking about is not sustainable long-term. I think we all agree with that. I've talked to John Guido about it several times, and I've told him that it's a, it's a big enough problem, and a significant enough problem for us to try to fix totally this budget season, okay? I said, "I'm not sure we can get it done now, but we're going, we're at least heading in the right direction, trying to, trying to resolve the issue, and figure out how we can best do that in a fairness sense." Pulling the rug totally out of, from under a bunch of people right now is not the way to run a railroad, in my opinion, so.
It's good to get started, because we have this discussion each year, right about this time, saying we don't have enough time to address it.
We're just, we're going to start in summertime, having the conversation.
We've got to make, as a group, we've got to make the commitment to get it done this year.
And I'll work hard to get some good data for everybody.
And...
It's on, it's on Kevin's agenda to set this up, lead us into it, and make sure that we do have substantive conversation.
For the first time since we have, since we have a professional town or administrator, I think we can get it done.
We're going to work on it, and so, and those kinds of things, the kind of dialogue conversations are not very exciting unless you're the person whose salary being talked about is being talked about, but cumulatively, they have massive implications for the town's financial health and ability to sustain the services that we provide. Do you want to use something else, because I'm thinking, holding you ready up here?
Just a couple of, of the other categories, a couple small things I just want to mention.
Yep.
First being, there was an increase in the water based on actuals, an increase of $225. There was adjustment in the anticipated maintenance and repair line item, was reapplied to unanticipated maintenance and repair, and that's specifically to help with some projects that are in the budget, as I understand it. Laura, please.
Right, we've got a couple of one-time expenses to repair, the makeup air unit, you know, which also helps control mold, which we've had issues with in the past two years, that's $5,000. And $7,200 to do an engineering study of the flooding in the basement, which is long overdue, it was recommended by the facilities stu, study?
Yeah.
And that's long overdue, because that's still an issue.
You mean, you mean you're actually tired of waiting around in the flooded basement in your rubber villages with your squeaky? Are you tired of that?
A little bit, yeah.
I don't blame you.
Laura, I know last year, you reached out to the Gould Trust and the trustees to talk about getting some funds to help with repairs. Is that discussion going on this year as well?
No, it's not. The trust commissioners have indicated to the library trustees that they felt that the Gould Fund was Gould Fund Part B, they wouldn't approve expenditures for maintenance issues.
What does the cover?
It's, we do programming out of that, our, the quarter of the museum.
I'm sorry, I meant the, what does the fund cover, if not flooding, library, and disrepair?
It's, it's a matter of point of view, I guess. The fund is for the arts and building maintenance, that's the name of it, that's what Part B is named. The trust commissioners did agree to do painting at the library and recarpeting, because they felt those were improvements, but they did not want to approve any expenditures for, like roof leak, or what they felt that the town should take care of.
We don't have time to get into this conversation, it's going to take a while, and I'm concerned.
One thing I'll, if I could, I'll meet with David Strong, I think next week, I had that chance to meet him, I think it'll be helpful, too. Better understand how, what his role is, what he's been doing, begin a conversation. And then, there's an increase on the computer line item as well. Reflective of, you can see the year-to-date expenses for the computer, I already had $6,800, and my line item, I said $21.66. So we're looking to make an increase on that as well. And that's, Laura, please help me, that's contractual?
I'm sorry?
The computer?
It's not, it's not contractual, it is... What we pay from that line item is all the computer and software licenses for the library, virus protection, we pay podcasts for public computers to increase the speed, we have managed backup, our servers backed up in the cloud, Wi-Fi maintenance and administration, Deep Freeze is a software product that freezes the configuration of the public computers and website hosting, so that's what's in there.
It's a comprehensive line item for all that.
Right, for all the computer and software.
Was 20 the first year you had any of those expenses?
No, they were all in office expenses, and I felt that, that kind of masked what it was, so I wanted to pull it out so we could see that.
Good, I think it's a good move, even though it looks like we're spending money that we never did before.
Right.
The clarity trumps the, a bit of seeing that large number there.
Appreciate it. So, in the essence of time, we'll move the debt and the unclassified to next Thursday. At that meeting, we'll talk from public safety to police, parks in separate areas, or highway, counseling, I'm sorry about that.
You'll eat your day.
So that's a...
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We have opened our meeting, and I know we have a forum planning board, I'm not sure about the ZDA. Do you have a forum and a planning board?
Yes, we do.
Do you need to open a meeting yourself, or are you just...
Do you post your... I think it's just for general discussion.
That's fine.
So it is general discussion?
Yeah, this is mostly fact-finding for us and asking questions. I don't expect that we're going to be making any decisions, if this is a big enough topic, we're going to have to be thinking and talking more, so. I'm comfortable with that, I wanted to give you the opportunity, if you felt it was appropriate and necessary, but.
Would you like me to introduce who's here?
Yeah, please do, John, very much. Can I just, just before we start, I just want to say to folks out there in Dixie TV land, this is going to be a discussion about downtown rezoning, questions of whether we could, should, and how we might make some adjustments to the zoning to better support the goals of the town. And I pass it to you, Don Rich.
So from my zoning board of appeals, I have David.
So you can be on camera.
So from the zoning board of appeals, I have David Merrill. From the planning board, I have our chairperson, Martha Morrison, Jenny Merrill, and Josh Rounds. From the historical commission, I have Liz Mahollen and Norm Eisler. That's it.
Excellent.
Can I go over there?
Thank you. Unless you want to talk.
So, my understanding is that, and again, there have been a number of informal conversations that have been going on, sort of one-on-ones here and there, about ideas, possibilities, and so on, and this is an opportunity, it's a public meeting, this is an opportunity to hear from the planning boards, and the ZDA, and those of you who are here, we're in the historical society, too, what we think... what we think might be possibilities, what's in play, and what are some of the issues. The question is whether there could or should be a warrant article for this coming town meeting for a zoning change, and we have not proposed any yet. I will share my bias that I think there are some ideas that I've heard about, and to the extent I understand them, I think would tend to lead me personally, I do not speak for the board, to think that this would be a great year to start moving forward because of the work in downtown revitalization. But today's the day we're going to get a better picture on whether to have some reasonable, impressionable profit. So, my...
Mr. Chair, we can't get everybody around this table, obviously. But at least the planning board, since that's the one that's the key on it. I think we can easily fit in three chairs here.
I don't have a problem with that. Do you want to...
We're going to slide around a little bit more.
I keep forgetting to get the camera, the back camera there. So, I'm okay with it. It's not a bad idea.
We're running Kevin Lee.
All right, well, somebody's going to take a seat. You guys move up the... Are you waiting, John?
Yeah, I think, because we can probably get more on this.
Here's your chair right behind you.
Yeah, I'll have to get John to switch that way.
Oh, I got to go this way.
Do you want my zoning board member here to come up there? I can tell them what to do.
That seems perfect.
Please, thank you. And historical commission, um, historical commission up there, too? Glenn is here as the zoning enforcement officer, I forgot to mention.
Thank you, Donna.
It's a matter of fit. From a conversation point of view, if we can all see each other, I think that suits us. The question is, this is not an officially recorded session except audio, although Mr. Gant is going to record this, which will have the audio and pictures of all of us, so from the back of our heads.
And he puts it on YouTube, so you can all go back and see that.
So, I'd like, if it makes sense, Martha, as chair of the planning board, ask if you would open with your sort of summary of some of the questions and issues.
Well, the recommendation, one of the recommendations right at the beginning of the implementation thing, and also in the detail.
You're referring to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Which, for reasons, I can't print it, but it's neither here nor there. There is a recommendation that there be an expansion. It says, explore rezoning of the town common and abutting lots. And I think that question, what abutting lots? I don't know where this came from. Is, is this a reference to lots abutting the town common? Or what we've talked about at other times, abutting lots that are abutting the existing business village?
I think both.
Okay, because those are two different things.
They're two different things. But I think the thought was, it might be opportunities in the business village district as it is now. There is a sense that has been evolving that maybe something special needs to be done for the common. And in that case, my sense is that it is the common, the streets surrounding the common, and the lots abutting those streets on all sides.
Essentially, are we talking about the library, the Emerson Center, the Oomburn, the common, the Volz Jordan House, the Rossmann House, the church, and all of that just a little?
Yeah.
That's it? Right, those are the lots, that's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
But certainly, anything that we do in the common district would have to be significantly different from what exists in the business village. Because this is perhaps the best preserved town of common in the way one. And we don't want to all of a sudden, you know, change it and, you know, and commercialize it in a way that would detract from that. So, this is all doable, I mean, but I think what we need to talk about, with Kevin Plath, the historical commission is here, and CBA, what we need to talk about is, what would the impact be? Now, you also mentioned and also says something about guesthouses, restaurants, and business offices. Well, guesthouses are already allowed by special permit, so you can need to know that. And then, of course, restaurants and business offices. This involves, it's not a single warrant article. The creation of a new district would require something in Article II for establishment of district, and you'd have to have the uses and conditions in Article III. And then you'd have to do the density and dimensional standards and any other special, you know, standards in Article IV. And most critical, the signed by law. I mean, because if you have a district, the signed by law, you know, references all of the districts. So, we're talking about a series of warrant articles that would have to be. And as I say, it can be done, but I think the question is, you know, a question is, what's the, what are we going to get out of it? I mean, do we know that of the four privately owned properties around the common that someone wants to do something? Do we know that?
I have heard an indication of interest from Frank Martino in opening a full-service, full pour liquor license restaurant. In addition to the catering business, his interest is in being able to employ his staff, catering staff, all around the league, so that he doesn't try to sort of, oh, something came up on Wednesday, he's got to find his people, and they're off doing other things. So, it would provide steadier employment and so on. And that was the main thing that I knew right now. I've also talked with two or three people who have looked at some of the other properties and said, oh, that'd be great. I'd love to do it. Talk is cheap, but at this point.
I mean, zoning just enables, you know, makes something possible. It takes someone who is willing to take a risk and to, you know, to invest and to do whatever to actually make things, you know, happen. So, when we, the last time we created a district, we did the Business Highway North. And the process, it took a long time. Because the most important thing is that the public needs to understand what's going on and why there should be a change. We conducted, I don't know, is anyone on the planning board at that point? If you may remember how we did these, you know, all of these things. We conducted informational sessions. We sent out notices to everyone within two miles, you know, of the intersection of Ipswich Road and Route 1, because that is an important intersection, and it, you know, leads to everything. Original proposal was for a certain set of lots to bring them into conformity. That was the reason for doing this, that it was a residential zone. And there were all of the complications, you know, anyone wanted to do something, they had to deal with the issue of non-conformity and findings and CBA. And so, people weren't doing anything, because, you know, they felt it was too complicated. But our process was to explain why we wanted to do it, how it would help, politically perhaps you need some improvement. And people were able to ask questions, and some people didn't want certain lots included. They wanted a buffer left between a commercial district and a residential district. And it was through one or two of those sessions that, you know, in the library packed room, with people asking questions and...